Call this meeting to order. 911, terminally as a forum president, Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Voskis, Commissioner Middleton, Commissioner Flotus and myself, we have a forum. Commissioner Middleton, if you'll lead us in the pledge allegiance service, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Need to check agenda? You can have mine. Get put up there. Right thing they're going, you can have it as anything.
You got it, I got it.
You got what?
Got it.
Item four, present the tax rate discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have the non-revenue tax rate for 2021, which would be .4667. And 2021 voter approval rate would be .0228. And the de minimis rate would be 0398, .0398. Last year's rate was .5121. And the non-revenue rate for last year was .4888. And the voter approval rate was .5462.
And just in, let me ask a question, just in layman's terms, can we keep the same tax rate with the amount of money that we're making, the extra money that we're making?
Yes.
And not, not have to go off the voter approval?
Yes, we can.
What's the rollback rate?
Rollback rate? That would be the voter approval rate, which is .0228. Oh, last year's, it's .5, .5462.
That's this year's rollback rate?
Yes, last year's.
Last year's rollback rate? This year's rollback rate, alright. And our current rate is .51...
21.
21. And that is a, when you say our...
Non-revenue revenue.
Revenue rate was .4667.
Right.
What will that generate in additional revenue from current tax rate?
Around $700,000. $786,000.
And you're comfortable with that? We looked at the numbers, uh... When we, when we put our numbers together for, for the budget, the one I'm gonna present to y'all, and I think we can get it done with that.
Yes, sir.
Even though we're on about 600, 500,000 in revenue from GIO? In our revenue, uh, our revenue from GIO and the budget, the one that I sent to Matt, uh, we usually have close to, close to millions, by 900 change. Uh, I lowered it to 650,000. And then we adjusted even some of the JP, some of the other income that we had, we adjusted them, uh, and basically lowered them. The current rate, if we don't change something, what is costing us a GIO with this operation on the start? Do we have a number on that? A projection of what it's gonna cost us if we don't do anything different? And DPS continues doing what they're doing, our current loss is 4,800 a day? So... The reason I'm asking is I want the taxpayers to understand what's costing us to run this operation and the effect on our budget for this.
Okay, so as of mid-March to the 8th, we've lost 203,480. Keeping a daily tab of best, the increase goes up.
And that's just jail costs?
That's those sort of funds that we're losing.
And because we're over, yeah, because we're over. That does not include any of our additional costs, which is through deputies, their time, or, but that doesn't include anything else?
Nothing else.
We're about, we're about $40,000 a month.
Good, what would you call our total loss on this situation?
On the jail?
On, on hold.
Well, and that's what Bo's trying to come up with right now, you're, on a monthly cost, we're about 40 some odd thousand, $41,000. Uh, right now, we've already appointed, uh, they appointed 43 attorneys for us. So your 40, 43 attorneys at 400?
Seventeen thousand, a little over 17,000.
And that's with those, the problem is, is that, uh, the state set aside $200,000 gave it to Trola to take care of 200 more individuals, or take care of the next 200 after the first 43. Problem is, though, that we're, we're gonna be getting that 243 pretty soon, and there's not a plan to, there's no plan from the state on what they're gonna do after we hit the 243.
So in your estimation, Jason, what you, what, what do you think we'd be able to get back from it? Your estimation?
I guess, what are we gonna get back?
Yes.
You might as well throw a dart at, throw a dart at the wall over there and just pick a number.
You're not counting on anything?
In this budget, I'm not counting on anything, bringing anything back. I mean, it's scary because on the Thursday that the governor added was here, uh, the question was asked, from here forward, will we, will we be reimbursed, uh, from here forward? Uh, because this is the day that he came down and said, from this date, the answer was yes. Question was also asked between here and going backwards up until March, we had like 130,000 at that time, like was a magic number. Will we be able to get reimbursed? The answer was, uh, get those costs to us and we'll see if I get you a check. Uh, we have not seen any monies at all. Uh, it's been, it's been given to, I have my stats, Pstat, Istat, and everything, but it's Pstat the one that, that it was turned into. Uh, and then it closed down, and then it was turned into Tdam. Uh, the Tdam lady this past week, Bervorolo was talking to, said, I'll turn it back into Pstats. Uh, the portal was open again to be turned in. It was turned back into Pstat. So the monies that we want to get reimbursed on, even though they might not be current today because they change day every week, those numbers were turned in. When you ask me, um, how much money are we gonna get reimbursed? Commissioner, I don't know. I really don't know, it's pretty scary, I don't, you know, I think, you know, Roland Udoni, you asked me if you'd get us to come down. Roland Udoni's supposed to be turning in a bill into the state legislature in order to see about getting counties funded. If, if we turn in an invoice, uh, part of the bill would be that we get paid within 30 days. But, you know, again, answer your question, I have no idea, this is, it's, it's scary for the simple reason that, you know, we're over 200,000 right now. And then we, in reality, those are just the beds that are over the 110. But I, I mean, we, we haven't gone back and figured in the beds that, under the 110 that caught, that we lost, like Matt said the other day, you know, it isn't the $10, it's the $25, sort of.
But that's if the contract remains as written, we know that we're having a contract negotiation with them and may not come out favorable, according to the language.
Yep, but the problem is, is the governor makes some promises, but he needs appropriations, and they don't have a majority in the House to vote on any appropriation to do. So winning if they can ever fix that, I don't know. We did meet with Senator Udoni, and we're trying to put together something that will get us, but even if we draft a bill and get it through the Senate, if they don't have a majority in the House, we still not gonna get it passed. Um, and from what I'm reading, they're not expecting a majority in the House in this special session that actually started today. So it is very possible that we never be reimbursed for anything of what we spent on this thing here, and, um, that's what concerns me with this, this, you know, if we continue down this road with this operation, we could be a million dollars in the hole by this time next year.
How can we stop the bleeding?
That's part of the conversation we'll have, you know, in executive session. I, I just wanna make sure, because once we adopt the tax rate, we're done.
Right, now, just to your concern, Commissioner, um, one, I guess you could say, one of the good things that came out of SB2 is you do get to roll over your, your unused increment rate. And that increment rate is 3.41, or three pennies and 41. So we can keep that for three years. So we do have a, a healthy fund balance right now. And if things do get bad, next year, you would be able to tack that on to your additional increase, so that you can go up to a rate in the increase of voter approval rate. So that is one of the good things out of SB2, is you, it's not a user, if you're gonna roll it over.
No, not...
The debt was increased, so it enabled the, uh, the tax rate to go up? Not go up, but...
I, I guess, what you're saying is, is if we were to keep the same tax rate right now, and we'll be able to function right now with, with the budget that we have, or what's, what was presented, and then because we lowered GIO's dollars coming into it, I already know that we're gonna take a hit, uh, or, or plan for some type of hit, even if we, even if we don't negotiate the contract. Uh, the next fiscal year, we could come back, since we still have some pennies in there and still raise the tax rate the next fiscal year.
You could, if, if things did not come to fruition from the governor's office.
I just, I, this court worked real hard, and you work real hard to get us a decent, a good fund balance, and I don't wanna see us deplete the fund balance and then try to get it back, even if you can't get the extra 3 cents, still takes time.
Okay.
And you're only talking a few minutes, you know, and, and I don't wanna do a tax increase by any form or fashion, but the taxpayers need to understand that there's a cost associated with this operation, and it is costing us a lot of money. And we haven't even started the cost on the county attorney's office, the DA's office, the, the court systems, the, the sheriff's operation, the county clerks, the district clerk, you know, those costs haven't been associated into this operation yet because they're just now getting to the part where they're actually doing the prosecution and all that. You know, we've got people sitting in jail that, that are costing us money every single day. I just wanna make sure that when we adopt this rate, we're gonna be able to function this year, because it seems like every time we think we've got it figured out, there's a new crisis.
You're correct, and, not that we wanna budget on hope, but we do know that there is some flexibility within ARPA for the courts, and the final rules are not back yet, so maybe when the final rules do come back, those guardrails will even be loosened up.
And I understand they're trying to pass a bill to change the whole parameters of that usages of those funds and stuff like that. Um, we'll see where they go. And, and that's fine, I just wanna make everybody aware. One of the, one of the deals, I guess, that goes back to your concern, if, if we keep the same tax rate, we're able to function. And then next year or the following year, if we needed to, we could go up on the tax rate, like you said, even though it's only a couple pennies, at least you do keep some of it back. We have a little bit of a fund balance, which we really don't wanna use, but we know that we have ARPA money there that instead of, it's gonna play out one of two ways. We can use it, if this doesn't go south, to be able to move our county forward, or we could use it to reimburse on some, some of the stuff that we've already done in order to be able to just hang on to what we have.
Correct, but, right, the hope, one way that we have to use ARPA for that, but...
What is gonna be our fund balance projected? I understand we don't know exactly.
We're right, just under 6 million.
I just want everybody to, and mainly the taxpayers to understand that this operation is costing them a great deal of money. And this court is trying to do this without raising taxes. But there is a point out there where the public needs to get on the phone with somebody in Austin and start saying, guys, don't need to get some money back, because we can't continue this operation. And, and that's all. And, and taking back to what you said, the numbers, Commissioner Wardlaw, it'd be real hard to sit here, and I hate to try to project anything, but if we were to do the $40,000, $41,000 a month, we still have, uh, basically this month and next month in our fiscal year, but still four months left in our, in the calendar year. So, I mean, it could hurt if we can't get reimbursed.
What point did we panic?
We'll have that discussion, and, uh...
Today?
Before, yeah, before the, before we leave, we'll not be scared. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, we'll have a conversation in executive session. There is some, I guess, some remedies that are gonna, but it'll be something that we'll hear in executive session, and then coming out of it, if we need to take some action, then we can take some action then. So we're going to go with the 45121 technically, that's the current rate.
That's correct.
You know, and it's really a shame, uh, I love, me and Gus, we've been a part of, this is the, the third court, uh, and we weren't here, you know, before with Mike and all that, but there was always some money set aside, and there's always been money, whether it was in interest and sinking, and now in the general fund, and then we built it up higher, and it's just a damn shame that, uh, now we're talking about having to use some of it after everybody's worked so damn hard to, to get it to where we are, and, you know, it's just, it's just a shame, uh, that we're being put in this position. And, you know, and, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and say it, pardon offensive people, but we have the president and our, our governor that sort of have an efficient contest, and we're down here, the ones getting wet. I mean, it's just something that, that there has to be a resolution, there has to be a solution, and we're talking about the process that they're going through with the interventions during our tax rate that has everything to do with our budget. Uh, so there has to be some way that we can come together and not be so far right, so far left. We're gonna let people in, there just has to be a better process. And again, it's, it's a shame that we're talking about this during the tax rate, I mean, uh, because I don't think, and you said a little while ago, Commissioner, I don't think people really realize how much it's going to affect us. And at some point, I'm the only one right now that's, that sits on this court that actually voted for the last tax rate increase, uh, because people, you know, we just, we don't wanna do it. Uh, Commissioner Flotus and Commissioner Middleton were, were part of that court, I guess, five years ago, six years ago, voted, voted no, and here we are, uh, even the same individual that voted no, it's like, now what are we gonna do? You know? It's difficult. We're stuck in a situation where I, the last thing I wanna do is, is hit the taxpayers, you know, I mean, at some point, these are the repercussions of the decisions that people in Washington and Austin make that affect the local taxpayer. You talk about unfunded mandates, this is probably one of the most expensive unfunded mandates we've ever had in our life. And a, I would say probably what, Matt, about 15% of our budget goes to cover unfunded mandates from, from indigent defense to all kinds of stuff, it gets, uh...
I am happy to have figured, Commissioner, but...
No, I have, it's, it's, it's a pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah, it wouldn't surprise me.
And, and we, we signed on with the governor because we wanna do the right thing and, and protect our community, although we've been screamed at for years and years and years about us being out of, county being out of control with the taxes and all that, but this is exactly why we're having this discussion now, because we've been put in this situation where we're being backed in a corner. And, and at the end of the day, we still have to continue to fund all this. You know, people need to understand that the jails are on the back of the county, the court system's on the back of the county, the public defenders are on the back of the county, the, the prosecutors are on the back of the county, I mean, that, that's funded by us. I mean, the only piece the state really pays is the salaries for the district judges, we pick up the tab for the rest of us, and, and it gets real expensive, real quick.
I just think that taxpayers need to understand that there's no way out, I mean, unfortunately, we're a border county, we have to deal with this until it gets fixed. We have no other choice than to move forward with what we're doing. We can't just pop and, and quit.
I wanna, anybody else? I just wanna hold out.
Right, what you give for calling me in on Monday?
Uh, the tax rate's been presented, it's .5121. I'm gonna make a motion to, to, to adopt a proposed rate of .5121. I have a motion by Commissioner Middleton. Second, Commissioner Voskis, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on the proposed rate, it is a proposed tax rate, not a, not a, the final vote on this. Uh, Commissioner Wardlaw, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Voskis, do you vote yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Flotus?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero vote on the proposed tax rate of .5121. Moving on to item six, set date for tax rate hearing, uh... This calendar that we have.
I was hoping you were gonna look at me. We, we did not get together on this, so what would you like to do?
Well, I'd like to have it on the 31st and, uh, and then go ahead and move, have a hearing on the 31st, and then later on sometime in the 31st, uh, adopt the tax rate, do our budget, do all that, that would be my, if you're okay with that.
Yes, that'll work.
Motion to set the public hearing for August 31st at 9:15, that'll work?
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton. You did not do that, I'm sorry. Turn my phone off, everything's going on. I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. To publish the tax rate, we could do it on the 18th, and that would give us, that would be next Wednesday, it gives us enough time to put something together for the paper, especially since it only runs once a week, are y'all okay with that? And we'll make a motion to publish the tax rate, we'll publish it in the paper and on our website.
Website.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, 5-0 vote. Set date, uh, for budget hearing, we could do that also on the 31st. Make a motion to set the date for August 31st.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Voskis, all those in favor, 5-0, uh, set date to publish for budget, we could do that on the 18th also. Motion for 18th, August 18th.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote, set date to adopt budget. We could use it for August 31st. I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton.
Taken.
Second, Commissioner Voskis, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote, set date to adopt tax rate. Motion for August 31st.
Taken.
Commissioner Middleton, I have a motion, Commissioner Flotus, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
5-0 vote, vote to set elected official salaries, what I proposed, and this is where we can talk about, we can talk about. What I proposed was a 3% increase for all elected officials. Uh, there was, uh, also for commissioners and the county judges, it was $1,000, uh, went up on auto allowance. And then there was one elected official that, that we had in here, uh, which would be County Court of Law, Sergio Gonzalez, that his, uh, was not raised. Uh, we were gonna tie him into the district judges, and we were, I think there's one district judge that's still a year, two years away from having the 12th year, and that's when they get there next month, I already visited with him, told him what I was doing, but our elected officials, all elected officials would end up with a 3% raise. Uh, the other deal was, is that, uh, there was a question about maybe using, uh, not just for the elected officials, but, but for everybody, using funds in order to hand out, uh, stimulus money, some of this ARPA money towards, towards them, uh, towards everybody, but also include the elected officials. So if we're gonna do that, then that number, we have to come up with the date, that way we can go ahead and set their salaries and make sure that we publish that.
You were gonna set the salaries today? Can we table that, talk in executive session real quick about that? Bring it back?
Okay.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, to table after executive session, all those in favor, 5-0 vote. Uh, the set date for budget, we have a meeting on the 17th, our regular commissioners' court meeting. Make a motion to set a budget workshop on August 17th.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner, uh, Voskis, and item 14 is the same, sorry about that. All those in favor, the 17th, 5-0 vote, item 14, no action. Uh, item 15, discuss possible action on the use of the fair notes of September 11th to retire the flag September 11th, 2021? Motion. Second. I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Wardlaw, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Item 16, discuss possible action to adopt the resolution, uh, if a bill is filed by Senator Roland... I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the judge to prepare a resolution once a bill is filed by either the senator or somebody to support us getting reimbursed for the operation on the start.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Discussion possible action to approval and apply for the county feral hog grant, I, I brought this in, there was a timeline, so I... Motion.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Wardlaw, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Discussion possible action, I think we've already done this, I just need some clarification to make sure that we're gonna go out. Discussion possible action to go, action to go out for RSQs for bond council? Motion.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, 5-0 vote, discussion possible action to go out for RSQs for financial advantage. I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Proving TWD, uh, TWD grant agreement 40062 for flood infrastructure fund project and authorize county judge to...
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Item 21, approval of Kelly Wright subdivision, authorize county judge to sign construction agreement, this went before, uh, land use and zoning a little while ago, it was approved. Motion to go through.
Taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second Commissioner Voskis, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Approving ratified contract with bond council, this contract was a contract that, uh, our attorney had already looked at, it was for the specific, it's specific to bond council agreement for the $210,000, uh, certificate of obligation that we're going to write on. It doesn't obligate us to...
Nothing.
Motion for, authorize the judge to sign. I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second...
Taken.
Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, I have a 5-0 vote. Item 23, closed session consultation pursuant to Texas, Texas government code, A 551.071, currency two, turn of climate privilege, B 551.071, currency one, currency eight, contemplated litigation. Y'all gonna give us the room, about five minutes?
Recording stopped.
She sounded like a big woman, though. Recording and progress. Okay, commissioners' court, uh, we'll come back in the session, it is 10:45. We'll go back to vote, uh, proposed elected official salaries, this is proposed. Uh, we've talked about, uh, across the board, it would be a 3% raise for everybody for $1,200, I think, whichever is higher, and I think most of the elected officials, no, all the elected officials fall under the $1,200, not the 3%. The other thing, uh, ARPA money, there's certain departments that had a lot to, to
to do with the COVID nineteen, were actually out in the middle of the night, or you name it. So I want to propose that the elected officials, it's either three percent or twelve hundred dollars for every elected official, that would be their regular raise, and then, uh, the sheriff's office, county attorney, uh, for commissioners, and the judge would receive a two thousand dollar stipend out of the ARPA money, and all other elected officials to receive thirteen hundred dollars. I did say sheriff, county commissioners, and the judge, two thousand, and every other elected official, thirteen hundred.
I'll make a motion to, to set the salaries and pardon.
Taken. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotus, and before I get called, this will be my line of thinking, I will tell you that, uh, as hard as everybody worked during this pandemic, uh, I was blessed to be able to be part of, of this team that I just mentioned, and the amount of help and, uh, the effort that these individuals put into the pandemic and winter storm and everything else, you know, like I said, I mean, all of us, you know, we had phone calls, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, uh, giving out disinfectant, uh, and that's the reason, that was my reasoning behind, uh, these elected officials right here that I just mentioned. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotus, all those in favor, a five five zero vote, uh, on the, set a, a time for the, for the hearing, and we set the time for the tax rate of nine fifteen on the thirty-first, the hearing, uh, item eight, set date for the hearing, we set it on the thirty-first, but if we could set a time maybe at nine thirty, uh, where the, where the.
Which item was it?
On November eighth, sir.
We call them in, I'm watching, we'll make it, eh, nine thirty.
Uh, Commissioner Vazquez, you were the second.
Second, yes, sir, yes.
So Commissioner Nettleton made a motion on the thirty-first, uh, public hearing on the budget at nine thirty, Commissioner Vazquez accepted, all those in favor.
Aye.
A five five zero vote. Janie, was that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Any of y'all have any other comments? Uh, I know that, uh, we're beginning with this, uh, immigration issue, and I think it keeps Dick getting pushed out, uh, what we're, what the court and, and what we're dealing with as far as the tax rate, our budget and everything, we know it's going to cost us money, so, and I know the commissioners will do a good job by putting that out to the public, that we did not raise the tax rate, but if this continues, uh, at some point in the next fiscal year, uh, I, I just don't see how we, uh, how we don't. So to our citizens of Bauri County, if we continue to lose money the way we're, we're losing money right now, uh, it's coming, as, as much as the court would hate to, to do this, but it's going to be difficult not to. Uh, this, your next fiscal year, it looks like we're, you know, we're going to be able to absorb some of these costs, but I don't see that happening, uh, the, the other, the other fiscal year, so that's all the comments I have, anybody else have any comments? If not, uh, this meeting is adjourned, thank God so much.